About how my involvement in the project is and wanted to ask, can we maybe do this on a basis that I try to join every meeting that I know of and when I think the content is relevant and then you can always like request me for joining in, asking questions or anything particular and when I have points, I would like to discuss with you. We can do that at the beginning and then I hop out again?
Absolutely. I think that could definitely work. I know that you wrote in the in the channel about your schedule and I read it and then I totally forgot about what time that times there were and I was looking for this the other day and I couldn't find that post. But it's there. But we should probably have like project, project related meetings that suits your schedule there Crusader, just said. But we can also ask you to join in on the, you know, you know our schedule, it's Tuesdays and Thursdays, but those meetings, they do conflict with your schedule, right?
Well, I wouldn't how I organize my life, I wouldn't call it a schedule, it's just at some times I have certain events happening for me that is specifically gaming and the like the core PvP times of the game that I play, they are in exactly this time window. So at 19:30 it starts being like the four hours of a day where you want to be there. This doesn't mean that I can't make it at this time. It's just just some information and like I said, if we have something, I mean, I can, like if we maybe start half an hour or an hour earlier, it would be, would mean for me that it's, I have to, to cut down less stuff on that, on that other side. But I don't think there isn't any like a loose and agile structure. We can always make meetings out of those normal ones where we say, okay, we talk about this specific thing where I should be there and.
I totally see that. So I can just say that we're in the beginning yet, right? So we're on like, you know, I think we did three weeks of the program and we're getting to know each other and also the project's work kind of will pick up in the latter part of the, of the, of the, of the program. And I think that we can, we can accommodate, you know, your schedule or preferences and everybody else's. And, and I think that the better we know, we get to know each other, the, the more meetings can happen, more impromptu, like, you know, when, whenever people are like, oh, I would like to pair program a little bit on the project and we, you know, people will, will create something like a meet perhaps or meet up however in the, and post that on the in the Slack channel and so on, right? So I think, I think that that will give itself, you know, one way or another, we can, we can find one way to collaborate. We are just in the beginning yet, so.
Yep.
Does that, does that make sense?
Absolutely. Same, same idea here.
Cool. Awesome. Awesome. Right. Anya is the host and it feels like just to me, it's just like, we just took over. But yeah, it is the weekend session, right? For the project. Awesome. My idea was before y'all joined and before we went, we went live on Anya's channel is that we could, since we did a little bit of Cypress last time around and since our project is running on React, how about we do a little bit of an improvised session on setting up a new React application using the create React app scaffold and then install Cypress on it to get it to work kinda, you know, so we can, we can repeat a little bit of the, of the stuff that we did last time, but in a slightly different context. How would that sound? I have one thumbs up and silence.
I like it.
I'll be doing it with my whiskey.
What we're doing now. Yes, Crusader, you raise your hand.
Yeah, I just, what I'm interested in, are we gonna talk about databases today?
Are we gonna talk about that? Well, we could talk a little bit about databases because I see that we have, we have Mirsad with us, right? Yeah. So what we could talk about, actually, we could, if possible, Mirsad, if we could even start with that, is that if you would preach the gospel of Firebase to us, that would actually be interesting because that would touch upon some backend functionality and, and and some databases and stuff like that, right? I don't know if you're, if you're up for it. Yeah, well, that's the spirit. Yeah, sure. I love it. All right, then, preach your way, brother. No, but no, seriously, I know that me and Mirsad, you and I, we had a few discussions back and forward about things, you know, and, you know, about things like productivity, getting something up as fast as possible and so on, right? And you know where I stand, I do Ruby on Rails because of that very fact, like I can get extremely productive scaffolding APIs really fast, you know, in Rails. And you on the other hand are a fan of Firebase and I can clearly see the benefits. I haven't been where you are, but I would love to hear more and I think that the, the, the team would also benefit from that. And also, we do have this project that uses Firebase, so this is close to home. So if you can tell us a little bit about that, if you want to share your screen and show us some stuff, that would be even better, I guess. If I let the question go around first, how, apart from Mirsad, does anybody else have any, any experience with Firebase? A lot of silence. Well, then you have a very thankful and grateful audience in front of you.
Yep.
I have no experience.
Cool.
So okay.
Already positive to see Diablo III on your desktop.
We love you already. You're making friends here.
What they changed with? Nice. Okay. Let's see here. Why did they change the site again? Yeah, it changes frequently. Okay, so Firebase is a backend as a service. And what that means is if you are, you get a lot of backend stuff like database authentication, analytics and everything, and it depends on what kind of services everybody's offering when they say backend is as a service. But I first, when I went to 2015, I went to something called how do you say that? That's like two years education crashed or something. So I went there just to get my degree, that I know the stuffs I know. So I started creating a little project there where you could sign in and they will get like free hands. So you, the thing I did was create something called topics library, use the Spotify API where you could sign in and then pick like a year, say 1960, and then it will show the top rated songs of that year. And I felt like, okay, this is cool. I got it working. But then I felt like, okay, I want to create so that you can sign in and everything. And I didn't, we had like two weeks and I didn't feel like spinning up MongoDB, creating authentication part because that stuffs take time. So I thought, okay, there's gonna be a better way and faster because I started with Ruby on Rails, I think it was 2010? 11? Yeah, 2000, something like that now. Sorry for a couple of years ago. And I was a really big fan of that you could scaffold the stuff really fast. The authentication part took like a couple of minutes to set up and get full authentication. I thought, okay, there's gonna be something on the internet that does that. So then I started looking and I found something called Firebase and it was like 2015 where Google just bought Firebase and they had like a transition period. So that was when I looked into Firebase, I felt like, okay, let's check this out. And immediately they showed how you could create a chat application with full authentication and database request and everything in like 30 minutes. And I felt, yeah, okay, there's a lot of free stuffs that they have done to get that up and running. But yeah, they showed, created a full long quick react app at the start and yeah, just added Firebase credentials and then started adding authentication and then database, database request. And I was like, okay, interesting. Because what I saw was four lines of code to get like signup people, four lines of code to sign, to sign in and four lines of code to create a database request. And I was like, okay, that's too good to be true. So I started investigating and well, it was actually like that. So I got really impressed and start looking more into it. And then, as I said, Google just bought it, so they created their own Firebase subdomain because firebase.com, I think that it's redirected to Google now. Yeah, but before that they had their own, so Google created firebase.google.com for their service and then they started to add in the documentation. So at the beginning, I was jumping from Firebase, from Google Firebase and the Firebase documentation, just to get a grasp on how everything works. And I started out with the real-time database and real-time database is sort of like think of it as a JSON file. That's sort of it. And I started with that one and with the authentication part. And yeah, I created my little topics library where you could sign in and then you could retrieve data. And that took me like, I think it was two weeks to create where it took me three days to create a whole application, then I wanted to hook it up with Firebase and that was my learning curve. And after two weeks I sent in the project and yeah, it was really nice. And then I started to really embrace Firebase. Okay, what else can it do? And at that time it had database, that was a real-time database and authentication. And I think it had it was a long time ago. I think it had something else, the storage. It had the storage, you could host binary files, media, video, whatever. And so I started looking into that one, created profiles and stuff and then Google just took over and they added something called Firestore, which is more of, think of like MongoDB, but on Anabola. That's how I see it. Because the, why sort of like completely moved away from MongoDB and just went with Firestore is because of their security rules. I normally say that's like Google security because if you set up security rules correctly and it's really easy to do it, then you will have a really high security level. And because the Firestore acts like the API, for example, so you can attach mobile app to it, you can attach a website to it, you can attach like simple whatever you want to it. And that's what got me interested more in Firebase. So let's just show.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mirsad? So, so Firestore is, is like it's a NoSQL database solution, right? So, so I'm thinking about the learning curve for an old guy like me since I haven't actually worked that much with MongoDB, for instance, or any other NoSQL databases. How about the learning curve on that? Is that like, if you, if you've been doing a lot of relational databases before you start with NoSQL, where, what are we looking at for a semi-intelligent person like me?
I used Postgres and my SQL database and everything and going from NoSQL was, it was interesting because you need to think totally different on how SQL structured the whole thing. So what they do is instead of tables and entries, you have a collection and then you have documents. So think of, if we say, for example, user, that is the collection and the documents is the user profile. So that's how you think of that part. And let me just see here. We have the, yeah, I can go to console and then go to documents. I have a lot of projects.
I got you.
Let's see here. Firestore. And we can take for example, because I want to see, I want to show how you do create, read, update and delete.
Yeah, exactly. That's cool. Yeah, let's start with that.
That's the thing that I want to show. They, this is how we like initiate the whole Firebase thing. You just create a file, add it and then you export, you can export it, there's different ways to do it. But what they are, this is the fun part that I really like because what you only are doing after you have done this part and initialize it, do db dot collection. This is you always look, when it comes to NoSQL, you also should have like root collections. You should not nest them a lot because then you will do a lot of reads with different collections. So to be able to add a user, this is what you do. You do db dot collection and then the users. This is what, this is the thing that you can how can I say that, that you can name yourself. So you can be used.
Is that like an equivalent of a table name?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. That's the table name that you create. And then you just do dot add and here you need to post it in as an object.
So, so Mirsad, there is a request and I think I concur. Could you make, could you do command plus or control plus a few times so we can, yeah? Code is a little bigger.
Oh, yeah. I just bought a new screen. It has like 5,000 something per solution.
Gotcha. We love those big screens. There we go. Look, now even awesome.
So what you're doing is you add the collection, which is, as Tom said, the table name, and then you have these methods because here you have add, I will go over them, but we can start with add. So what they want is, we use this method, they want the object. And you can structure this how you want. A good thing is to always have like the same structure on every user or else you'll get problem later on. But you can.
But it's not enforced, right? So the structure is not enforced on it.
Exactly.
So, but, but in a relational database, it is, you have to work with attributes that are actually in the, in the table, right, in the table columns. But here you don't have to do that.
No.
If it's not very wise to skip it, right? Because they, then you won't get, I mean, you, you're looking for predictability, right? So if you ask for like an index, like a collection of users, and some of them might have different attributes than others, right?
Exactly. Because the thing that I always say, even it's not enforced, you should still add all the key values to every user that you add because say, for example, if you go with here we can do code sandbox.
Yeah, make sure to make it quite big too, right?
Yeah. There we go. Because if we go for, because let's create I just create an obviously and we add ID we add name and then we can add there you go. The thing is, if we would have this structure right here and then we add another user. Then we have another user that we add, but we have the name, we can but the last name, we don't add it. The problem that this will enforce is let's see. There we go. And then we have user. Because what we are doing now is iterating over names, but if we were to do something like, say this is the problem if we are not using the same keys here. Because it will show first, last and but it won't show other one. So this is inconsistent and it's not good.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the part that even if it's not enforced, you should still add the same key to every object that you want to add to the database.
Right, right.
So let's say here we can have say, I can type this project. Firestore database. I can show you how the whole thing look. So this is how it looks. You have the collection because it always says collection, document, collection, you can just nest it how you want. So here we have the collection URL and what this does is having like a root table. This could, this is equal to the users. Here, and then this is the document and this is what the object documents that they want to add. So when I add a document, this is the fields that will be added here. So this is where you add. So always have like consistent when it comes to objects because it will thank me later. And this is the only thing that you're doing to add something to the database. That's it. And then you have the response that you can just say what you want to do after, like, okay, the user has been added or notification.
Okay, and so, and the primary key, which is usually so, so, so the primary, so are you working with like, I see that you have ID here, for instance, doc ref. So doc ref stands for document reference, which is the, the hash, like if you switch over to the other, other you just had, that was this is, okay, so, so this is the reference, okay. But so, so, but why do you feel, or why do you I just tried to wrap my head around this, but why do you need an ID if you already have a document reference?
The document this is after you have added, it will automatically create an ID for you if you're not specifically add that ID to it. So if you were just to add, it will create this hash ID for you automatically. But you could also do, yeah, I can get to that later on because then you do just dot doc, stands for document, and then you could add your own key.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
Yeah, that is really good to, what they're doing here, I wouldn't do it like this because I would take the, if you had used like authentication, you'll get the unique user ID to it. I will add the user ID as a document. Because then you can easy create that with security rules and everything.
Okay.
But we will go over that with the authentication part.
Okay.
You can also do that Firebase, Firestore take care of the ID or you can add your own. And this is literally the only thing that you need to be able to add stuffs to the database. That's it. So, and that's, that's the whole thing. And then if you want to do yeah, then you just do the same thing here. If you want to read the data, then just do dot get from the users. The thing is, you will get it as a snapshot. So if you do the collection, you will get every document inside of that request. And that will be an array. But you can't read it because it is a query. So to be able to read it, you need to loop over and then do data dot dot data because that will convert it to more readable yeah, more like key value pairs.
Okay. Oh, like a JSON, like a
Yeah, like a JSON, exactly.
Okay, okay.
And that's the thing that you do. You have add to add and then you have the dot get. But you will get it as, yeah, an array as a query and then you need to convert it to dot data. And you need to loop over them to be able to do that.
Okay. Can I ask, can I ask a question about this then? So you, you, you are opening up those code examples in something called Web V8 and then there is V9 beta. What, what's the difference between those two? It's E6? No? Yeah?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then you have those different, the other languages.
A lot.
Just, just sort of
Is it the JavaScript V8 engine or?
Once again, Mike?
There's this V8 engine that runs on the, on the, on the browser. Could that be?
Could be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could you just show me, just, just because I'm curious about the Ruby, if you show me the Ruby implementation for reading data? So reference the collection path, you just get, okay. Okay, and then you create, that's my user document.
Do you like here for add, you set?
Okay, okay. All right, cool, cool, cool. All right, interesting, interesting.
And yeah, this is the, how you secure the data. This is how the security rules look like. If I go to rules here, I think I have added some because this is still in development. Yeah. So what you're doing is here is also like object, but they have, this is the security rule and this is like the power, it's really powerful. Because what you can do is say, this is like the root, then you can say, if the request, because you have response and request. So if the request matches URL and then the URL ID, which is, just gonna open up a new one. This is the URL and then the ID which is here because then you can add this, have this reference.
The method, there's a request on the chat, if you could zoom in.
Yeah.
Try, yeah, try, yeah, exactly.
Need to remember that. So what they're doing is they always check the request and response that if you, it checks the path, so URL is equal to this, which is the collection. And then you have the document which you write it like this because then you can use this as a reference, like a variable. Then you can do calculation with it. Oh, yeah. So here you have either write and read and write, but you can also do specifically like read, update, delete. Have it more pinpoint because if you have write, then you can update and delete them.
Oh, okay. So you basically are saying on line five here that allow read, update and delete if, no, allow read and update, but delete if, if the request is authenticated. Is that what you're saying?
No, because then I would have created this on like
Okay, okay. So all three are, all three are restricted?
Yeah, exactly. So you can read, update, delete if the request is authenticated, if the request is not null and the request of dot with your ID. So what this means is, I have, I can show you the project so you get a better idea. This is still work in progress, but I can explain a little what this project does. What this project does is because I noticed that some people are afraid to click on websites. What this project does is, because I noticed that some people are afraid to click on websites.
I am, yeah.
Yeah, so what I'm doing here is paste in a URL, click scan. What it does is use puppeteer in the cloud function, and then it takes a couple of seconds, because this site is, why did I do that one? Yeah, the cloud function needs to spin up. And then you get an image of the site back. So you know, okay, is this site safe or not?
That's a, that's a, that's a neat function. I, I was trolled by a, by a real idiot just a week ago in, in, in Twitch. He sent, he asked me a question, he sent me a URL, and it was like a hardcore porn, you know, thing, and I clicked on it, because I was, I was careless, and boom, it popped up in my, in my stream. So that was a shitty move on, on his side. But you can pre-scan those, those.
Yeah, so what it does, this is like, this is like a puppeteer, I'm like, done with it, I'm just gonna fix the domain. But what it does is like, just go into a site, take a screenshot of it, and then send it back to you, and then you know, okay, this is.
Safe, yeah.
It is safe or not, that's the only thing that it does.
Just, this is a side note, there is a, there is a, there's this service, I think it's called Clarify, and they have AI bots. Well, it's actually, it's a machine learning thing. So you, so we use this for, to build a moderation API for images. Because you can, you can tap into that API, and you can see if it's safe or work. You know, if, if it's gore, explicit material, or anything like that, you know. So that, that, that's a nice little API. So it could also be probably tapped into, into your idea, you know, so you can, not only do you see it, but you can also get a classification if the, if the site contains any, any images that are, you know, photographic or whatever.
There was, there's a machine kit here somewhere. Yeah, Google has that machine, yeah, machine learning part. So you can automatically scan the image and give you like a rating of what it is. So what this whole rule says is, if the request. If it's, if you're authenticated, and the request that you're doing allows you to read, update, and delete, it must be the ID of the request. And this is where I have, because this is anonymously a request automatically, which sets the ID. So if you go into the site, it will automatically create a new ID that is anonymous. You're not signed in, but you still get an ID.
Okay, so basically that restriction means that you have to be authenticated, and you have to be the person that created this URL. Okay, so, okay.
Then you will be able to read, update, and delete it. If not, you won't get access to it.
Right, right.
This is the security rules, I'm just doing like a really helicopter view of it. But this is like, you can create really powerful rules with it, and it is really simple to start with. Yeah, this is also the thing, I love to have videos and everything, that, that you can go over with. Let's see here, I understand the project graph from previous stream. So they have this one, and if you want to, we can do. We have done read, add, and now we're going to do the delete thing. The only thing you need to do is, yeah, this is. The only thing you need to do, just like dot delete, and then add the. The ID of the document you want to delete.
Anya raised her hand, let's see.
Yeah, Mirsad, can you please talk in Spanish and then in Russian, please? Thank you.
Okay.
So a background story to that, Anya, on her stream, she has some, some things that people can redeem for channel points. And Pedro just redeemed you speaking Spanish, and then just to spice things up a little bit, I redeemed Russian talk, so. But we gotta wait for Anya to take the stage. And Chinese, now because she dresses as Chinese also. Awesome.
Let me use Google Translate to that.
Yeah, for the Chinese, at least.
Because we have like read, we have done create, which is add, then we have done read, which is get. And then delete is the same thing, but you do just add the, why did it say? Instead of. I don't know if I stole it, yes, I am. Because then you just do dot delete on the documents. And you can also like do more with it, but this is like the basic thing. Get the ID of the document, which in this case, we could add this, and then just add delete after it, and then you will get a response saying what you want to do with it. Then you can add a notification saying that document is deleted. And if you're gonna do the update, you just do the same thing, dot doc, dot update, and then add a object to it, and then just update what you want. And that is how you literally do create, read, update, delete with the Firestore. It's like four lines of code.
And basically what you're saying also is that the request method doesn't, doesn't play any role in this at all? So the, the restful approach of, of, of dealing with HTTP verbs to create certain actions, or so that, that doesn't come into play at all?
Nope, not at all. Because they, they take care of it. You can like start deep diving into how they do all the methods and function everything, but they take care of everything for you. And the thing is also, as this warning says, if I were going to delete, for example, this document. The documents below it won't be deleted. So what you could do is create a cloud function, as soon as you delete something, add like a key called. Delete, and then set it to true, and then cloud function will go over the, the. The document, and then it will automatically say, okay, this is deleted, then I will delete it. So the first thing you do is soft delete, and then you can let cloud function literally delete the whole document with every sub collection.
Okay, so it's, it's okay, okay, so, so, so it's a no, okay, it's no, no SQL database with, with all functionality that comes with, with creating and updating record, or record-like stuff, but they are, they are document-based. How about associations? How about, how can we map that? That, for instance, as you, as you, as you said, like, I cannot delete anything, because I, I didn't create the, the URL, for instance, right? How do we store that data?
How I store it is, as soon as you go into the site, you will get, let's see if I can. As soon as you go into the site, you will get a unique ID. Because if you have authentication, you sign in, then you get a unique ID with anonymous authentication. Show here. You have all of this out of the box. Then this part. What it does is, you don't need to sign in, you don't need to do anything. This is a way to keep track of what the users are doing. So, and then of course you need to have the GDPR stuff up, but this is still in development. So what it automatically, as soon as you enter the site, it will automatically give you a unique ID, which is one of these. And then you will get this unique ID. Every time you do a search for a website or something, you add an entry to it, it will automatically fetch that ID that it anonymously gave you, and store it here.
Okay.
And then you can just do like, if you clean all the cookies and everything, and go into the site again, then you will get a new ID.
Okay.
And this is how I store the whole thing. And as I said, this is the, I, as you can see, I had a user ID here. And just, the security will just check if the request that I'm doing has that.
Okay, okay. All right, so, so, so if I ask another question, and guys, if I ask too much, just stop me, you know, I'm just a, I'm a curious person. So let's say that, let's, let's forget about the user who created and stuff like that for, for a second. And think about a situation where you have, has many relationship. Let's say, a document or an article, news article, for instance, has many comments, right? It's a very common, you know, use case in, in a relational database. You, you, you post something, or you create something, and then you attach many, many things, right? Or, or an order has many order items, for instance, right? How would you, how would you play that out in, in a NoSQL database?
How I would structure the whole thing is, I would create a collection called item, items. And then I will, this is item, and then it can be. Item. Item, and then I could add price. This is number. Then I could add the URL, that's a string. For example. This is how you will store it. So you have all your items here, and then you have all the key values. And then if you want to add, for example, say, reviews.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Normally, what most people would do is create a new collection, specific for that item.
Okay.
But I wouldn't recommend that.
Well, you just got my hopes up first, and now you say you wouldn't recommend it. Please tell me how, what can I do?
What I would do is create a new collection that is in the root called review. Review. Now, I would not auto-add this, I forgot to. Open this, one second. What I would do is start a collection, review, next. I would not auto give it ID. This is where I give the items ID here. It's easier to match it. And then I will add review, name, the person that reviewed it, for example. Then I would add. Rating, this will be a number, say three, maybe add like three out of five or whatever. And I save it. So now, the item has this ID that starts with, that ends with BH. And then you can easy do like, when you iterate over the items, and then you come to the part where you have the review, you still have the items ID. And then you just go to the review and do DB dot collection, review.
Got you.
Dot, and then you add the ID to it, and then you will get the rating for that one.
Okay, so you basically, okay, so you don't use a foreign key, but you use the. Well, well, you use the, 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 the parent document's ID as an ID for that child.
Yeah.
And, and identify it with that. But, but just, just out of curiosity, so let's say that you have multiple reviews. Right, what, what can you add? You can't really add the same, the same.
Oh, no, one second, no, you're right, I did a, I did a mistake here. One second, yeah, you're right. What you should do here is. Have a collection here called review, it's all right, I forgot that. This should only be information about the review, the rate. For example, say that average. One second, let me do it like this instead. Yep. This is why it's important to test out the theories you have. So say, for example, you have reviews. And here you can let it auto-create one, and then you can add like, this is the information of that review.
Okay, and then you added that, that, that would actually work almost as a foreign, foreign identifier, right?
So you could add like product name, for example. Where it says. Ophi. And then you could add different type of information that the review would have, like for a heading, for example. Something, and then you add something. There, and then when you save it, it will automatically pop up. And now you would add the collection. So here, you will call it user reviews, for example. And now you just auto-add, edit it. What you also could do is add the unique user ID here. So you can structure it that way, because then you could, so say this is the unique user ID, and then you have fields that said rate that, and we add that. The number that user rated three. And then you could also add the base, they have timestamp. So now we have this whole structure where we have the reviews, which is the same. Reviews with the document, and then if you go into the user review. I'll, I'll mess it up.
Yeah, but I understand the concept, I, I hope everybody else can do, said you can reference it back to that one, okay, cool.
The collection with the ID of the item, and then you create a new one with the users.
Right, right.
I will can create, later on, on next time, I can prepare a little demo.
Sure, sure, sure.
On how to use the, then we go, make a quick react app out of scratch, and then just create a simple cloud application that you collect, add stuff to it.
But so, so basically, so what Firebase brings to the table is that fairly, so, so it's a fully hosted service, and it's, it's quick to set up, and it comes with a lot of, a lot of functionality. We, we spoke about the database and the, and authentication, but I do understand after, after just browsing a little bit on their, on their site, that they have a lot of different capabilities as well, right? So, so it's almost zero configuration, you can get started with building stuff, right? And, and that's, well, that's a big upside, I would say. So you can get, get quick, you can get it up and running fairly quickly. But, okay, so, so let me ask you this then, in terms of pricing, how, how expensive is it?
If we go to.
Because you know what they say, there's no such thing as a free lunch, right? They want you to spend some money. It is Google after all.
But they are really generous, I told you that. If you take, for example, authentication part, this is the free versus pay-as-you-go. Pay-as-you-go works that you get a free tier every month. And then as soon as you exceed that free tier, then they start billing you. So if you look for example authentication, you get 10K authentication, phone authentication per month. And they use 10K and all, all around the world. So I mean, 10, for a free plan, you get 10K monthly, and then you just reset every month. And then when it comes to. Cloud Firestore, you can store one gig total, that's a lot.
That's a lot, yeah, yeah.
That's really a lot. And then you have documents, right, that's like, because every time you write something, that count as a document, right? And here you have 20K, you have document read, which is 50K, and then you delete 20K. And same with functions, they. Yeah, the pay-as-you-go is, that's 2 million per month. That's.
It's, it's a bit, that, that's still not with us today, but Pedro, Anya, and Crusader, you took a look at the, at the, at the. at the application that, uh, Tassilo wrote. Do you recognize some of the, 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 the functionality or the code that, that Mirsad was, um, was showcasing, uh? Like, do you know how he is using Firebase today?
To, to be honest, I never worked with, with Firebase and, um, I think I probably also don't wanna dive that deep in, in, in certain areas that, um, that are basically like the, the running business. So, so my general idea would be to only touch stuff that is existing if we have a good reason for it. So we need our own, uh, environment, that makes absolutely sure. And I think like, like Thomas, you already said in Mirsad, where, where you both said it's the value, like you can spin it up just like that fast. So I think let's, let's take that low hanging fruit and do whatever solution you think is best. And I think in the midterm, we can think about, do we wanna deploy certain, um, components, like the database or some other code? Do we wanna deploy this on a blockchain-based project, bas- basically decentralized hosting? But this is something, at the moment, we have to, to deal with very, with much more basic things, so let's focus on that and let's get things, stuff done fast and uncomplicated.
Gotcha. Pe- Pedro, I know you, you, you looked at that code as well a little bit. Can you say anything about how extensive is the usage of, of, uh, or can you assess that, how extensive it is uh, in this, in this particular project?
I looked at the components, right? Uh, and when we looked at it in Anya's stream, it was more like, uh, at the front end side of things, not really at the data access, uh, layer, n- not that's a thing in here, I guess, but, uh, we didn't really look at the access, but we can, we can take a look, I guess.
And Mirsad, you have been invited to that project as well, right? So, okay, without pulling it up on screen, because we, you know, but, but have you, have you had a chance to look at the code yet and?
Yes, I went over the code and, uh, there were like, there was some sensitive information that we need to remove uh, and put it in like cloud, uh, function, because they have like API keys and stuff. And then there was, uh, some stuff that we could like refactor to make it more, uh, more like Firebase way of doing it. But, uh, yeah, I went over the code and, uh, there was some refactoring to do, but other than that, it's really doable, really fast.
Okay, uh, so, so, uh, th- th- thanks for this, this, uh, this overview now. Could you tell me, is there any code snippets, like how you, how you authenticate? Is there, uh, uh, I would love to see that, just, just quickly, you know, without diving too, too deep into, into these things.
Let's say, manage users. Uh, this is how you, no, not on stage. This is how you sign up the user with username and password, because as I said, you have, uh, all this, uh, authentication to utilize. So we have email password, and this is how you do. Firebase dot of create user with email password. Then you just enter, these are strings, the email and the password, and that's it.
Okay. And so on your client side, you can, if you want to be a little more specific, so you can do password and password confirmation, but that would happen, that validation would happen before you invoke this method then.
Uh, yeah, because you can, uh, have, uh, let's do it like this. You have so different stuff you can do, but you can also create email address verification, where you can activate that. Password reset, email address change, SMTP, SMS verification.
Okay, gotcha, 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 awesome, awesome. And then how you, how you, and then you sign in, sign in with this email password, okay, sign up.
And then what you, they also added is something called on off state. So you know, can easily know if the user is signed in or not, and this is how you do it. They have added, uh, this method to you, on off state change.
Okay.
If the user is signed in or not. If it's not signed in, the user is, uh, a false value. If it's signed, it will be a true value.
Okay.
That's it. And this is in routing, this is where you normally add it like, uh, as high as you can in routing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or you, you set it in like application state or something, right? Or in Redux, for instance, or whatever, right? Uh, that's what I usually do, I do like a current user, you know, in, in, in the, in this, in, in application. Okay, cool, cool, cool. So that's a, there's a lot of free stuff here, uh, well, I mean, like things that you get out of, out of the box for free. So, okay, so I have another question then, but this one is gonna go to Crusader, actually. We've been talking a little, you, you mentioned, uh, cloud or decentralized solutions. Now, uh, again, you know that I'm, I'm very new in this, in this decentralized web sphere. Uh, do we have, or is there like a decentralized, uh, DB platform? Or, or do, do, what, what can we do?
Actually, I, I have a lead on that, so I read, or basically Anya dug up a, a, a post about it where they recommend a certain stack, like hey, if you wanna do everything decentralized with Cosmos-based technology that you wanna do, those would be your projects. So Akash basically means all we need to do is build a Dockerized, um, application and we can throw it on there. Actually, I, I don't remember the name, but I will, I will look into that and, and post something in, um, about the, the, uh, the database stuff. But the way I imagine it, and I'm probably being a bit too optimistic here, but that is that you have a standardized way of doing something, like basically Dockerize an application and you can just, uh, throw it on the network. We have to see how the database solution does this, but I can imagine that they go with some like easy, you know, like, uh, setup language, like, I don't know, Compose or something like that, where you can maybe, maybe spin up several containers and link them, or, I mean, th- those guys come from the same world we come through and, and they want their shit easy and, um, f- f- uh, fail-safe and bulletproof, baby. So I think it couldn't be too hard and that's, that's what I know about it, so.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So, so, uh, because I was, I was thinking like, when, when I approached the, uh, now this discussion can, can take all, all kinds of directions, but I, I remember when I approached this, this domain, I was like, I, I had really high hopes for like smart contracts being, uh, uh, smart contracts could in, in, in principle be looked at as, uh, a database table, right? You have, you have a table, then you have multiple rows, which you have a, a contract, then you have multiple instances of the, you deploy this, uh, you know, um, you have multiple instances of the same contract, right? And then you can find them on the, on the net and then kind of, but.
Lo- logically not. Like physically you do, but logically you don't, you do not. Like because all the entries are to some extent synchronized and if you, if one basically doesn't, comply with the, with the valid, um, world state, then, then the whole, um, node gets rejected.
Ah, okay, well, so that's, okay, so that.
That's when Harkforks come into place, where a group of other nodes say, look, we have a different version of reality here. That was, that's what the Harkfork does, but other than that, um, your assumption is right.
There you go, uh, right, right, this is a tough word.
Sorry.
No, no, no. Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, cool, cool. Uh, so, so, uh, okay, so, but so, so I have another, uh, I have a, uh, just topic that I would like to bring up. So, so in this project of ours now, for instance, right? So we do have, we do have a solution that, where you have these localized ideas or suggestions and then people are supposed to vote on them or comment on them or, or things like that, right? Now, the, the, the idea that you guys floated and I, I, I approve of that, of course, is that let's make this voting, uh, like, the, the voting process part of the chain, blockchain, right? Like, or, or using the blockchain technologies, uh? Okay, um, and would we, would we, or would we store the I, the, the fact? Because, okay, hold on, let me just try and wrap my head. So the idea is stored in a, in a, in a No, No, NoSQL database on Firebase, for instance, right? And then we connect the, the voting and the votes as blockchain. Do we need to store something back in the database about the fact that people have been voting on it? Or how would that play?
Well, that's, that, that's a tricky thing, I think that's also the, the question of how far do you wanna, do, do you wanna push it? I mean, you could maybe make it like, actually, we, we, we suck everything from the blockchain and it's clear that no manipulation can be done. I think in our case, that's a, that's something for like second, third stage. So I think we are far more in the prototyping and getting something a bit more towards, um, production kinda kind of setting. And yeah, so, uh, I'd say let's, 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 let's keep it simple.
Yeah, 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 and let's, let's think about it. I mean, we, we can go, it can go through some changes while we iterate over this thing, right? Cool, cool. Uh, throw your questions on, on Mirsad about Firebase people?
I still feel pretty lost with databases. I'm just gonna be honest. I'm just gonna be honest. But, uh, yeah, I definitely appreciated the, the presentation and the time you took to, to go through things.
So, so I will carry on asking then, so, so there's, there was a lot of talk a, a few years about, ago, about NoSQL, all right? And, and like, uh, I do believe that a lot of, I, I know that the people at Amazon were started to deal with NoSQL and some other folks. And, and there was this huge, uh, debate over, you know, regarding performance, right? That relational databases are underperforming at scale. And that NoSQL databases are, are much better in terms of accessing data and so on. Uh, I, I assume that the entire, the debate about GraphQL came in, in somewhere, or perhaps I'm just mixing things up here. But what, what can you say about performance, Mirsad? What is, is, is it a fact that not NoSQL databases are more performant over relational databases?
This is what I was gonna say, it depends, no?
That's, that's a very good answer, it all depends.
Yeah, now the thing is that if we look at, uh, take for example, uh, Firebase, they have like a benchmark 100 milliseconds. And it doesn't matter if it's one document or if it's a million document, it still hit it at 100 milliseconds. So that's the thing that, uh, Google and Firebase are promoting, that we have this benchmark, 100 milliseconds, one or 100 million, doesn't matter.
Well, I also assume that it all depends on what, what decade you were born in. I, I'm, I'm the, I'm, I'm a child of the seventies and for me, relational databases are awesome. Uh, but I guess that, that, uh, we have to go with the times and change, change is the only constant. Uh, Pedro, what do you say about that? You raise your hand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I get the document retrieval amount, doesn't really matter. But regarding the relationships itself, i- i- it does need to take into account the, the schema that you're working with, right? And, uh, for me, what makes sense is NoSQL is great for schemas that don't really have a lot of relationships. While SQL comes and brings the relationship, um, uh, retrieval much faster for some use cases. That, that would be my take on it.
I can, I, I can feel that too, because some of the, some of the stuff that we saw today, I mean, you do, or, or you have to rethink the entire way you, you kind of think about relationships and that, and, 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 you know, records and stuff, but, okay, so, so, so there's another, a, a side, side comment from my side. Uh, a lot of people, when they see NoSQL, they interpret this name as, you know, no, like, get rid of SQL, whereas as far as I understand, NoSQL stands for Not Only Structured Query Language. Am I, am I right, or is it actually no, as in no? Mirsad, do you know anything about the naming?
No, not much, actually. The only thing I can imagine is that, uh, we can do a lot of queries against it, more like, I think, but you can also do that with, you can do some sort of query when it comes to like Firestore. Uh, like if this contain this or this exists or stuffs. But it's not like a really deep, uh, query language, you can query a lot of stuff there, because it's a NoSQL, it's sort of hard to query them. Because they, it doesn't have like persistent keys, values, or the keys on every document.
Nope. Perhaps I was.
Think it wrote to something.
Oh, okay. Uh, interesting, interesting. Okay, uh, I think that, uh, from my memory, it was originally NoSQL, but now it's not only SQL, okay? Uh, well, there you go, so I guess we were both right, or I didn't misunderstand, uh, everything, at least. Cool, cool, cool. All right, uh, I think that this was a good introduction to, to Firebase. But do you guys have any questions to, to, to Mirsad? I think you, you, you're gonna be a good resource on, you know, when we work with, with, and with the project, so that we can understand the, um, what's going on in the back, in the, in the, in the backend, uh, fully. A practical thing, uh, Tassilo probably has a, an account on Firebase. Now, is it, I assume that it's possible to invite others, uh, to, to, to that, or, uh, or, or rather, let me ask you this. Do we need to have access to the, to the dashboard in order to be able to work with the frontend? Or is it a way, is it a way, is there a way to kind of document? Or how much of documentation would we need to have in the project repo, like in Readme's or, you know, do's and don'ts in the documentation? In order to understand what, what the structure is, uh, of, of the, of the various documents that this application will be using?
The thing is that you don't, uh, you actually don't need to have access to it, because if you take, for example, the Firestore, you can just check the, add like a console log and see the response and, uh, see what kind of key is they are expecting. And feel sort of like go with the same structure, but it will be of help, because you can easy just, then just go to the, uh, Firestore and then just click, okay, I see items, this is what they have, I see the URL, this is what they, uh, what can, what keys they have in there. So, but other than that, I think you can manage without having access to this. But to be able to share access to this, you do it in Google Cloud, and you can just invite people to, uh, that Firebase, uh, project.
So Pedro's comment is, as far as I see it, Firebase looks extremely like MongoDB with authorization steroids and possibly more plugins. Would you agree to that? I guess it sounds like it. And cloud-based, so zero config, right?
Yep.
No hosting. Okay. MongoDB Atlas is also cloud-based. Okay. Okay. Cool. So, so is Firebase like a light version of Amazon Web Services? Could you do all of this on Amazon Web Services?
I know Amazon has something called Amplify. So that's the, uh, equivalent to Firebase. I don't know if Azure has something, because what they, why they did, uh, Firebase was just to have like, uh, instead of going to, uh, Google Cloud and see all the stuff you can do, and a lot of people feel like it's overwhelming, I won't do it, I don't know even where to start. Firebase is more like the way into Google Cloud. So you start with Firebase, you have an ID, you create it, and as soon as you want to like scale, uh, because Fire, uh, Firebase, you can, it can support like a lot of, there, I think it's a 1 million or something, but I normally say, go like 100,000 users. And then after that, go, go over to, uh, like Google Cloud. Or if you want to use, and, uh, I'll just, uh, the service provider. But, uh, I've. But I've, I think, I'm not sure, I haven't looked into AVS really much to know exactly what fire, the equivalent to Firestore is on AVS.
So so we got, we got, we got a comment on Twitch, I think that if the question was whether we're gonna use real databases as well. I I think it's safe to say that NoSQL databases are, you know, real databases as well nowadays, at least. They're they're not the new kid on the block anymore. Sounds cool. All right, I I I learned a lot. Thanks.
Mirsad, maybe I would have one, two suggestions or questions to you where I have some some architectural ideas. So just for my background, I'm usually more of a system architect instead of the guy who who codes all day. Like I can read code, I can write code, but it's it's not where where my heart opens up. So I thought we just do a simple deployment, get the variables out, clean up some stuff there. We do whatever Firebase you can spin up fastest. And then when we talk about production, which we think will, I guess we'll do at a later stage, then we can think about looking at some some projects, I'm gonna dig something up, I'm gonna explain you what I understand so far. And then we can basically think about what is what is the best idea and what is best for the project. So. Yeah, I thought throughout the whole project, I just wanna give give advice and help people moving over to some whatever we can do with blockchain. But I don't wanna build up any pressure or anything, or that is a must be, I think it's a something for afterwards, when when we grabbed all the low hanging fruits and did the basic, the important work. If you agree with that, if that's cool for you.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, cool. So this also goes for for anybody else in the project. If you're interested, you can just always ping me up and or throw me some some individualized questions or ask them here, so I can answer them for everybody.
So I can I can tell you this, like, if we can find a way to do all of these stuff, one way or another, on the decentralized web, using blockchain technologies, that would be even better. But because this this functionality that that you just showed us, Mirsad, is is awesome. Again, because it's so, it's a low hanging fruit, you can get, you know, get get to to production really fast and so on. But I would love to, I would love to see, I mean, it's still Google, right? And then Amazon is still Amazon, right? And then, you know, the Azure stuff is still Microsoft. So could we move away from those dragons in one way or another? I would love it for ideological reasons, if 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 nothing else, you know. But so, yeah, so the so so if we can find something like that, then that would be, that would be Crusader's job, to find find us a technology that we can learn. Yeah, no, but 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 seriously, I think it would be well worth to 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 see if there's anything going on in that part of the web, you know, on the internet, where where we talk about, you know, not non-big tech, right? I would I would like to coin that not even NoSQL, non-big tech SQL or non-big tech solutions. That that would be really, really, really nice.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But until then, until that day, we gotta go with Firebase, because it sounds like an awesome solution. And this old dog will have to learn NoSQL at some at some point. It's probably long overdue. Mirsad, how does this play or does it play? Is this even relevant to ask about about NoSQL or or, you know, these solutions and GraphQL? How does that kind of connect to each other?
When it comes to GraphQL, I normally say if you have a more than, if you have like two different APIs, then you should like have GraphQL as a middle layer between the thing. But if you only have one, I don't know, I don't see the value in it.
Okay, okay. Because the only time I was I was I've been involved in GraphQL is like when you query relational database for for a lot of info. Like perhaps you have several endpoints or, you know, you want to aggregate a lot of data, because that's what you're gonna use. So you can build a middleware that queries those different different endpoints, aggregates everything, you know, removes whatever nonsense you don't need, and then sends it back to your frontend, basically, right? That was my 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 exposure to this, to GraphQL, but I guess it's very limited also, so. All right, cool.
Yes.
Okay.
No NoSQL databases. Maybe another word to describe them is that they're graph databases, right?
Graph databases, okay. I'm not familiar with that expression. Mirsad, anybody else?
Yeah, because I think what NoSQL databases does, probably in terms of relationships, you just have objects which are related to each other. And if we are people, Mike and Thomas are people, and Mike is a friend of Thomas. It's not must that like the properties that Mike would have would be probably more than what Thomas has. Maybe Mike is on LinkedIn and Thomas is not on LinkedIn. So it it just draws a kind of a graph from from the relationship that exists between objects like the nodes. Yeah, so probably that's where the term referring to NoSQL databases as graph databases maybe come into play, just how the relationship work.
Yeah, okay, so so Pedro Pedro claims that it's a completely different thing, although the a very quick, you know, I just asked the almighty internet for advice. And according to Wikipedia, they claim that graph databases are a type of NoSQL database. Although I know nothing about this, so I can read out loud from Wikipedia, but then again, you can do it yourself for people, so I don't have to to do that. But interesting. There's obviously a lot of stuff to learn, people. Which is scary in itself, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, cool, cool, folks. We, where do we go from here today, tonight? What do you think?
I I I would just say we we still have, we have again a friend visiting, so I can't stay for too long.
With all those friends, how many friends do you have?
You guys tell me, you guys tell me, more, more and more.
That's that's the truth, right? No, but let's let's, so let's keep it to one and a half hour, if that's possible, people. So so we we have like five, 10 minutes left, unless you have to call it quits earlier. Is there anything we can we can discuss for the time being? How did you, so Anya, you you worked a little bit with the Cypress stuff in your in your in your stream. How was that? Did you make it all work for you?
Yes. Absolutely. So I was pretty happy about the Linux environment. To be honest, and yeah, no, everything worked fine. It was very quite easy to to use and to reproduce. And as I said, I really liked rewatching your video, and I don't know if we can integrate. I mean, have a thought process about that in future, but the fact of kind of pausing you before I do stuff, it's before you're gonna do the stuff, you know, and reveal what's to be done. It's actually pretty awesome, because then it forces me to to think a step ahead, and then I I can double check whether what I'm doing is completely out of line or, and yeah, so very pretty awesome, and I'm excited to to use Cypress and and Mokacha now for the for the project.
Did anybody else go over the Cypress stuff? Castres, how your marathon watching of the of the videos go for you?
It's going okay, but I'm not, I'm not up to speed, so I'm like three or four videos behind.
Okay.
So I'm hopefully I get it done before the weekend is done.
No, no problems. Remember that if there's anything, if you want to pair program or anything, just 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 being me or the others in the Slack channel, we can set up a quick, quick hangout and just do some stuff if you get caught, if you get if you get stuck on anything. A visual interface wasn't working on WSL. Really, Pedro? That's, tell me more about that. What was that?
Yeah, it didn't, it hanged on me. I used Cypress Open and it just hanged there. I think you would need to install some kind of utility to someone's.
Pedro, I had I had huge problems using WSL as well. I I think Carl, were you not also using WSL? Have you come forward?
I wanted.
And did it work?
I think WSLG, and I got it to work, so I don't know which version of WSL you're using. But we can talk.
I'm not sure either. I would just, I would just recommend using a virtual machine rather than.
I I made it work, honestly, Pedro, but it took me three days, three to four hours per day to finally make it work.
Yeah, but there was a resource. I remember you did find a some sort of guidance somewhere, Anya, didn't you? Where where this this guy kind of gave sound advice that actually made it work?
I can I can have a look in my notes, but I'm not sure if I, I think that's that's the stage where I decided to give up on WSL, so. I'm not sure if I, but I'll try to check my notes, maybe I have it somewhere, because I think.
Person that hosts a blog. I'm sorry, Anya. He has a solution on on his problem.
Right, the one that you shared in 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 the notes here.
Yeah, in Meet.
Right, yeah, I recognize this kind of Nikki Muleman, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's usually in the stream, I follow.
On the topic of virtual machines, I believe if you act.
Your sound is coming and going, Carl.
Carl and his sound.
We we love you extra much for this.
Yeah, it's crazy, like in my bootcamp, I had no problems, and it's just here, so that's why I keep looking at Google Meets with a squinty eye. So on the topic of virtual machines, I believe if you activate WSL on your Windows machine, that it can cause problems with VMware and VirtualBox. Like, I just read that, I haven't experienced myself. I just wanted to mention that.
Right, right. But there is an issue with using this Cypress in, you know, whatever it's called, VSL or WSL or whatever it's called. But yeah, it's Mike just make a joke that you're probably joining from VSL.
Yeah, I just read it.
Yeah. Pedro, you rest your.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, but I didn't manage to do the Cypress Open, but Cypress Run worked wonderfully, and it took all the screenshots and all the videos that that it outputs, so that's working fine.
Okay, okay. So before we got into. Once again?
Probably he just needed to add the script on on Packet JSON for Cypress Open.
Could be.
Yeah.
But before we got into the discussion of 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 Firebase, for which I'm very grateful, my plan for today was to to scaffold the React app, set up a few, perhaps to React routers, some internal routes, and then a few sub-pages, subuses, and then use Cypress to to test that, to run a few integration tests, to write a few E2E tests for that. And if if nothing else comes up for tomorrow afternoon, because it is still Saturday today, although it feels like Sunday, because it's, you know, I'm off work and I don't, I lose track of what day it is. But perhaps we can do this tomorrow, tomorrow night, together do a cold, a long, you know, I scaffold something. And then, Mirsad, if you have a few moments over, you know, tonight or tomorrow, if you can just write a step-by-step Firebase-y kind of thing, let's say user authentication or something like that, then or fetching a little bit of data, perhaps not even user authentication, because that's too much for the first run. But but just fetching some sort of a collection, then we can, we can do that. And that would actually be really good, because then I can show the audience, the the guys, how we can stub out, like do fake calls to a to an API in Cypress, you know, using Intercept. Because the general idea of testing is, of course, that we do it in isolation, that we don't get live live endpoints. And so if you guys are up for it, we can do some live coding tomorrow then. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
All right. Well, that's good, cool. All right, I painted my house today, and I'm gonna continue to paint my house tomorrow, that's why I can't really think. But I will hydrate for tomorrow evening, and I will be on top of my game, guys, I promise. Right, I think that's that's all for us today, right?
Yeah, it seems like it, because my co-pro just died again, so.
Cool, cool. I will be online tomorrow morning also from eight o'clock UTC, well, six o'clock UTC. If you guys wake up early. If not, I see you tomorrow evening.
Yeah, I'll be doing an all-nighter tonight, so probably.
Should get some sleep, brother. All right. Thank you very much. And Carl, if you can't, you know, join, you're gonna catch the recording always.
Yep.
Right. Anya, thank you very much for hosting this. I am in the middle of rebuilding my setup here at home, so I can I can join. I can host, you know, good streams and not bad ones.
I think it's just pressing the button for sound, right?
It's not only that, unfortunately. My stupidity will not be solved by the by better better technical solutions, but there are other things that are not working. My my computer is just not performing well. She's tired. She needs a vacation. All right, guys. See you tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thomas, do you mind if I ask you a quick question?
Go ahead.
First question is, if if Cypress is on a scale of one to 10, if Cypress is a 10, what is Jest?
It's a 10.
All right. Yes, Shelby, so just to to finish up, and then I actually need you to spend some quality time with our friend here. Yeah, and I'm not sure what's what's happening here. Yeah, yeah, no. Oh, yeah, it works. Awesome. Minus 10, yeah, just still better, yeah. Yeah, just 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 T minus, yeah. I just wanted to say, oops, poof, yeah, good cutting point. Okay, I don't know about that. But I was just gonna say, Shelby, yeah. Sure, it's not what it was made for, but ultimately, when you have some some stuff like Cypress, that seems like you always needed a joy or like a gui or however you say, to 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 really make it work and to use it, then you're kind of stuck, because, yeah. But anyways, yeah, that was my experience with, I really loved the WSL. And I I have heard that the newer versions are good for that, so maybe I'll get back to it at some point. But so far, I'm just quite happy with a virtual machine, to be honest. Awesome, guys. I think I I may see you tomorrow evening again, because we have, and it's gonna be more. So today was more like the database discussion, so that we know where to go for for the project that is already using Firebase base. And tomorrow, I think the idea is more React and Cypress-based session. So we will see. With that being said. Ah, okay, there is like a, there is there is a debate between virtual machine and dual boot. I see. Thank you so much, Big Linter. You too. I I will I will have a chill night with our friend. And I look forward to seeing you guys again. Sometime soon, hopefully. Have a chilled Saturday night or afternoon or whatever. Many kisses, bisous. And see you, see you very soon. Ah, and again, of course, I always forget on those weekend sessions, but of course I can raid someone. I mean, it's always nice to show the love, I don't know who. But that would be more, so raid. A lot of people live tonight. Okay. Okay, okay, how about Classy Cat? I think Classy Cat. So many cool people out there. I'm not sure what he's doing at the moment. We will find out together. Nozubi, nozubi! My own machine, nozubi, sérieux. Bisous, ah, d'accord, d'accord, okay, je vois, je vois. Wow, okay. C'est la new school, the old school, new school. Okay, so let's go ahead and say hello to Classy Cat. Je me suis trompé, ah, okay, je vois, je vois. Zubi, ciao, ciao. Stop streaming, stop streaming.